Welcome back and now I'm going to call to order the special city council meeting. Today's Thursday, June thirteenth at seven forty-eight P M. And Madam Clerk, I ask for roll call.
Markela.
Here.
Dennis Flores.
Here.
Roger Gomez. Joe Latino.
Here.
Regina Maestri. Here. Sarah Martinez.
Here.
Everyone's here, that's good. This is a little different in a special meeting. Before we get to the regular agenda, Madam Clerk, I'd like to make a motion that we move D one to the end of the agenda after E one. Is there a second?
Second.
Let's call for the action. Passes six to one. Madam Clerk, ordinances, final presentation.
I'll have that as a six, zero.
Six, zero, yeah. Did I pass that up?
Said six, one, I see you used to having.
Six, one, did I say that?
Yes.
On medication.
So move us to E one and ordinance approving an easement agreement between the city of Pueblo Colorado Municipal Corporation, Pueblo County, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado relating to the construction, operation and maintenance of a limited access roadway, fencing trail, trailhead drainage and other associated improvements within the honor farm park and open space and approving the mayor to execute the easement agreement on behalf of the city. Introduced May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four by Council Regina Maestri.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, we have staff report.
Mr. President, members of council, good evening. The ordinance before you approves an easement agreement between the city and the county for the construction, operation and maintenance of the Medal of Honor Boulevard between Polo Boulevard and Joe Martinez Boulevard in Polo West. The agreement covers a slew of infrastructure, including the roadway, storm, storm drainage improvements and covers fencing and other maintenance and operation aspects. That concludes my report, I'll take questions you have if there are any.
Thank you for that report. Are we going to make a motion here on the, I thought Counsel Flores was.
We're welcome to have a another public hearing if you would like.
Well, I think we've had a public hearing.
You have had a public hearing.
The testimony, this was literally to move it forward so we could hear the agreement that the county commissioners would would bring forward, so.
I I move to approve this ordinance.
Is there a second? We have a motion to approve in a second. Counsel Flores, I believe you have.
Yes, as you'll recall, based on our last meeting, there was one issue that was outstanding and the issue was that this new road between Pueblo West and Pueblo Boulevard was going to encroach on a model or model airplane runway that the city constructed. And as a result of the redesign of this road, it it was, it became too close to this runway. And so we still had that outstanding issue. And I'm happy to report that we had a very fruitful meeting last week and was it last week, it was Tuesday.
Yesterday.
Yes, yesterday.
He's on medication.
I'm on, I'm on medication.
For sharing.
Passed my bedtime, anyway. We had a very fruitful meeting with the county commissioners and we came up with a a compromise, I guess you would call it. But one thing that happened is it seemed like all the stars aligned on the basis that this runway can be done a lot cheaper as a result of this huge highway contractor that's going to be building this road. So I have for all of you a proposal as to how this 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 agreement with the county commissioners will operate. And to make a long story short here, the contribution of the contractor themselves, they made a donation of a hundred thousand. The county will donate fifty thousand. And then we will as a city contribute fifty thousand. So that's basically the general framework of this agreement. There's other things in there, but a couple of things that happen here. One, the county has taken responsibility for getting this done through their general contractor. The gift will not have to go through city council like we do most, most of the time, we have to accept gifts and accept those. Here, the money will go directly to the county. And so somewhere down the line, we will have to cut a check to the county of fifty thousand dollars and hopefully that'll, that'll take care of that. So that was the only stumbling block and I would urge all of you, we had a very cordial meeting with the county commissioners, everybody felt good about the ultimate solution. And I want to thank them, I want to thank Sabina that that took the lead on this. Gary Razzo, who was the attorney working on the easement. And then, of course, all three county commissioners that felt it at the very end that it was a compromise and a really good agreement to move forward, so that issue is now pushed to the side. Now it's time for us to vote this as an ordinance because it's such a huge economic, it's going to have a huge economic impact. Another roadway between Pueblo West and Pueblo, it's going to alleviate a lot of traffic for the people in Pueblo West. We'll be, we'll have easier access. We hope that Pueblo West people will buy more products from us in Pueblo and it'll make it easier for us to go to the lake and buy stuff from them too, so I think it's a winning proposition and I urge my fellow counselors to vote yes on this ordinance.
Well, thank you, Counsel Flores, and we appreciate your effort in getting this done and it did not go unnoticed, you've done a fine job here and made this happen. And thank you to the county for being gracious enough to help us through this. Is there any other comments, Counsel Gomez?
Let me just clarify, especially people who are novices in this field, when I started to learn about this, to clarify a little bit, where we say a model airplane, I mean, these things are as big as drones, fifteen foot wingspans, maybe eighteen foot, and they fly on real jet engine, I mean, real jet fuel. So when I started learning about it, I was, I was in the weeds on this stuff until I finally went and learned, then I went and looked at it and I talked to the expert at the end here. That's what you got to understand, this is not just a little toy airplane that's landing, no, these are radio controlled, jet engine, large wingspan planes, that's all I wanted to say.
Any other comment?
Just that, you know, the, this, this is, somebody mentioned the amenities that we have in this community. This club has been active for fifty years. And I'm sure a lot of people don't know that they're out there, but it's part of the honor farm and you know, they've been around for that long, so we, we're going to be able to keep our asset and that's the important thing.
Exactly. All right, let's call for the action. Asses six, zero. Madam Clerk, resolutions, item D one?
I'm D one, a resolution appointing a qualified person to fill the vacant at-large city councilor seat created by the resignation of Charles Hernandez.
Thank you for that report.
Oh, well, that's just reading the resolution, if you'd like me to give you a report on the rankings and we're then happy to do so. So I'll start out by also consulting Mr. Gifford, our deputy city attorney. So I believe in, in making this decision, this post interview ranking again has no actual standing, it's just meant to be a tool to allow counsel to understand where one another is at without having to to have over much discussion on it. And it doesn't, it does not bind counsel in any way. And I believe one other thing that we wanted to do was to potentially allow counsel to suspend the rules to vote a couple of times so that they can again see where they're at because the rules of counsel do not allow for to vote on the same item more than one time. But because this is a subject that may require some just different decisions at different times in the meeting as you go through your discussion, then we would recommend that counsel does suspend the rules as part of your discussion until you are willing to actually put in the name of a person within the resolution for your final vote. So.
I believe I can suspend the rule as long as there's no objection.
That's correct.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, I'm, I'm going to suspend the rule that a failed motion is disqualified in this resolution as long as there's no objection from anyone here. Okay.
Thank you. So for the unofficial rankings, we had, so again, with one, with the with council ranking their number one choices, number one, that person was then given five points and so on forward and back. So those points put together put us at ten points for Alex Magatu, fourteen points for Colleen Clark, twenty-one points for Chris Nickel, twenty-two points for Anita Koffer and twenty-four points for Brett Boston.
You lost me. Who got the most points?
Mr. Boston had twenty-four points with the most.
Okay.
And then Ms. Koffer at twenty-two points, Mr. Nickel at twenty-one points, Ms. Clark at fourteen points and Mr. Magatu at ten points.
Perfect.
And again, this is just information to help counsel with their deliberations.
Sounds good, so we move forward, is there any motion to appoint a person to fill this at-large city councilor seat? Motion. Go ahead.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to, I'd like to nominate Colleen Clark for the seat. I, I have a couple of reasons, one, I think that she spoke in a very strength-based way about Pablo. So often we can admire the problem and I feel like we hear about issues all the time and I really like the way that she framed and spoke about our strengths in how she's going to tackle issues. I liked that, similar to actually Ms. Koffer, who also talked about it, about retaining young people and that, you know, she wants to uphold to the council ethics and that she is nonpartisan and will listen first, so for those reasons, I'd like to nominate Colleen Clark for the at-large vacancy.
Is there a second? The motion fails without a second, is there anyone else wishing to nominate anyone?
Yes, I, I moved to nominate Anita Koffer for this position.
Is there a second for Anita Koffer? We have a second from Counselor Martinez. Any questions or comments, anybody want to have a discussion?
I, I'll just make a few comments, I thought her presentation was very, very good, very eloquent on answering all of our questions, I thought she was very professional. I was impressed with her background. She's got a wide range of skills that I think that would serve the city well. And for those reasons, I am standing by my nomination.
Any other comments? Counsel Latino?
I, I will second that nomination.
It's already.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize. I agree with Mr. Flores with Dennis that she did an outstanding job in, in her, she was very eloquent, very professional, very down-to-earth, very transparent in her presentation.
Any others? Let's call for the action. Will somebody kick the squirrels? So it's three, three. We vote again. And we vote again. You're getting a lot of votes. Now vote. Motion fails, three, three.
Timmy, can we get the?
It's up there. You got, are you good?
So, yes, thank you.
So any other motions, Counsel Gomez?
I'd like to make a motion to Chris Nickel.
There's a motion to nominate Chris Nickel, is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a second, any comments, questions? Discussion?
I'm just gonna, I'd like to just say that and this means some, a lot of discussion about this behind closed doors, open doors, whatever, it's been all over the neighborhoods, but for me, I was looking for somebody to experience. Had we had different, probably past council folks like Corinne Kayla, I have a great lot of respect for Randy Thorson, these guys that have this background. And for me, we have a lot of important things we've got to get done and all I can tell you as a newbie, and I'm trying to get over it, I can't use that excuse much longer, but I'm getting there. But I look for experience and like I said, we've got to get somebody that's, that can get on this, on this fast track and, and get in front of it because the learn and they get that learning curve is, it's hard. Me and Joe are new. Okay, and we're trying to get past that, but I don't think we need another newbie on top of it, that's just my, my suggestion, that's all.
Any other discussion? Let's call for the action. Fails four, two. Is there any other nominations? Nobody wants to nominate anybody else?
I will nominate Brett Boston.
Nomination for Brett Boston, is there a second? And we have a second. Any comments, discussion?
I do.
Go ahead.
I'm a little difference of an opinion when we go to fill the council seats. I think that Brett is a young business member here in this community. I liked what he had to say. We, I don't think rebuilding a council, that's why we have term limits. You know, so much just even on a national level, we don't have term limits and constituency always wishes we had term limits at a higher level so that we don't keep repeating the same, 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 same leaders. And I just think that Mr. Boston gives a fresh perspective to the community and I think that he has, obviously, we all have a lot to learn, even as elected officials, we still, we are learning every day. And so I'm willing to invest that time in Mr. Boston and leading this, hopefully leading this community.
Great, any other comments, discussion? It's called, do you have a comment? Counsel Martinez?
I will say that I appreciate that he is actively involved in the city and I like that he does have a younger, you know, perspective and I, I did like that he called all of, all, each of one of us out for our specific skills. Because I think that it shows that he was paying attention, so I wanted to uplift that he, I, that, I think that that was a good touch.
Any other comments? Let's call for the action. Say, well, somebody didn't vote. Can't be three, two. Okay, everybody vote again. Fails three, three. Is there any other nominations?
Make a motion again or no?
Yeah, you can motion. Tell the cows come home.
Like the motion again for Chris Nickel?
Okay, we have a second, another motion for Chris Nickel as the replacement, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion or comment? No discussion or comment, let's call for the action. And it fails three, three. Any other nominations?
I nominate Anita Koffer again.
We have a nomination for Anita Koffer, is there a second? We have a second? Any discussion? Call for the action. Fails two, four. Any other nominations?
I'd like to make a motion again for Chris Nickel.
We have another motion for Chris Nickel, is there a second for Chris Nickel?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
President Ayliff, do you mind if I chime in on this since this was my previous seat?
I didn't hear you.
I said, do you mind if I chime in on this since this was my previous seat?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, I just, you know, I want to say that as a city councilor, as the at-large, as the president of the city council for the last two years, I took that role very seriously, it really helped me to get where I am today. And I think that it is an absolute must to have new perspective brought into the city council. I know that we have some newbies, as you say, Roger, I'm also a newbie, but I think that having a city council with new and fresh perspective is really something that the city and this administration needs to move Pablo forward. This seat, this vote is not taken lightly and neither was it when this seat was up for election. This seat costs twelve thousand votes for me to get in that seat, so twelve thousand citizens believed in me and they believed into a new and fresh perspective into the city. I was a business owner. I brought all that to the table. And I think that I, you know, I'd like you guys to consider that when you're up there voting for who's going to replace my seat because I think that having new ideas is something that's encouraging to the city, it's encouraging to the voters and it's, it's why I was elected in that seat and it's why I'm elected in this seat today, so I ask you to consider this when you are making this very important decision.
Thank you, Mayor Graham, Counsel Gomez?
Believe it or not, older generation folks have new ideas too. I know that's hard and I think I've worked a lot of perspective through this dius. I have a huge background and research and some of the things I brought forward, but what I'm looking for again is the process and how to get, to get that process in range, because right now when you bring in somebody new, I'm not talking about their ideas. Talking about keeping the ball going, that's all I'm saying. So I don't know if I buy the, well, we need new perspectives and we need millennials and all this other stuff, I'm just not a fan of that. Not because I'm older now, but because I think we all have something to offer here. I came on this, I'm a newbie here, like I said, but hopefully I'm bringing some decent ideas and I don't think it has to do anything with age, that's just my opinion.
Any other comments? Counsel Maestri?
I didn't take it as it had anything to do with age, it has something to do with fresh perspective and moving the city forward and change. And I know that we, I myself and a lot of people on this dius have campaigned on change. And so I think that's what we're looking at as far as moving it forward. And it's, that's where I'm in agreement with the mayor.
Well, one of the easiest, one of the easiest things to do when you're a city counselor or you're anybody in a position to make a decision is to agree and go along with everybody that has the same idea that you have. That's just typical, that's how we do things. If, if people agree with me, I think they're the greatest people in the world. If they don't agree with me, then I think, oh, man, they don't know what they're talking about. I do take exception, just like Counsel Gomez, that, that absolutely new perspectives, new ideas, things that will move us forward and not move us backwards are positive, positive things that should be considered by a city council. But it's, it's, it, you know, I don't want to use big words that confuse me. But the fact of saying that only younger people have better ideas, and that's exactly what you said. You said that, that we need younger, more people with new perspectives and new ideas. Well, those younger people can come to city council at any time and share their new perspective and their new ideas with their elected leaders and say, hey, we think we ought to go in this direction or that direction. This seat will be up for election in November of next year. So it's literally a seat that's going to go for what? Ten months plus another five months, so fifteen months. The community's ultimately going to decide who they want in this seat and, and not six city counselors. I agree with Counsel Gomez, what's most needed now is experience. What's most needed now is, is a leadership and an idea of how things should move forward. And, and with the rich background of having that Chris Nickel, in my opinion, stood out, stood out in the, the, the process. Stood out in the interview process as, as somebody who absolutely knows what they're doing and can hit the ground running and we could, we could move forward with that. I get it, not everybody's going to agree with me. We went through this process last time and I made compromises. I didn't get my way, I didn't do, I didn't pout about it or do anything else, I just did it because that's the way that this is supposed to work. But see, people say they're willing to compromise, they're willing to collaborate as long as you willing to compromise and collaborate with them. But when it's time for them to collaborate and compromise with you, that becomes, you know, I'm not willing to do that, I'm not willing to do that, I'm, and I'm going to overlook all of the positive traits of your nomination because of what, I don't know, but because he's old? Because he's been here before? I mean, that's ridiculous, that's a ridiculous argument that shouldn't be made. The argument should be made is that he doesn't know what he's doing, he would be a horrible city counselor. If it came up time for a, in a general election, out of all the nominees, would he stand a chance of winning that seat? I say yes, I'd say he'd stand a very good chance of winning that seat if he's, if he's there, but to dismiss him because he's been here before is, is, is ridiculous.
Just to clarify, I didn't dismiss anybody, I just said bringing a fresh perspective is what the city needs, this has nothing to do with
Well, I think that
Chris Nickel, it has to do
is that this is what you wanted.
It has to do with new people trying to be participants in the city council, you have four other people, President Ayliff, who have never been involved in city government who are applying now. So my wording had nothing to do with Chris Nickel, it has to do with the other people that are applying for the position.
Thank you. Any other comments?
In reference to the, you said, was it ten months, fifteen months before the next election?
Yes.
And maybe from the dius, they can tell me. Again, the, the, we talk about the learning curve, but maybe it's different for each one of us, it's not going to be the same, I mean, but is there an average, are we talking six months, are we talking a year, are we talking ten months, are we? If I had a more sense of that and we could put somebody in that position, whether they ran again, uh, uh, again or not, but if we knew what that curve was and we could get that going faster, or excuse me, taking it, making it shorter, wouldn't that be something we should look at? If you, if you follow what I'm saying, the learning curve, how long did it take you, Dennis? To catch when you first came out, you just started got like, did, would it come in two days?
You know, uh, I, I actually was appointed my first round, uh, I was appointed for almost the exact same amount of time as this. And if we're talking about uh having some equivalency of what we lost, uh, and, and I had a lot of respect for Chuck Hernandez, he was a, he was a city finance director and he had a great background, but he was also a newbie on city council. So my, my wish was that we would select Anita Kofer who not only has uh maybe a, a different perspective, but also has the background to be able to fill that position uh that I think is equivalent to uh to Mr. Hernandez. So, you know, if we, if, if, you know, so, so everybody has a different, you know, point of view here. But I thought she was the most impressive uh interview that we had tonight. And uh her credentials are uh
You didn't answer my question, I asked you, how long do you think it took you to catch on?
I, I would say, I don't know, six months, maybe.
Okay, that's all I'm saying.
And, but, but I also had, you know, previous board experience.
I got you, okay, I'm just saying for me, I'm, I have to lean on something here. So if that's the case, and six months, ten months, whatever it is, I just looked at the guy that, or the gal that would fill that role, how much of that couldn't they get over, that's all I'm saying.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second on Chris Nickel, let's call for the action. Bales three, three, is there another motion for another candidate?
Well, I will go back and um I will, let's put Mr. Mogatu up for uh for a vote and see where we stand there, even though he didn't get, um, he only received ten points. But let's go ahead and, and run this through and see if Mr. Mogatu.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Let's call for the action. Bales five, one. Is there another motion? Uh, for candidate?
Uh, I nominate Anita Kofer again. And I, I really believe, well, let me stop there.
Is there a second? So we have a nomination of Anita Kofer and a second, and any discussion now?
Yeah, I, I'd like to reiterate uh that we have, I think, um, a perfect candidate here in, in so many ways, uh, I, I just think that she rose above everyone else in her interview. Uh, I think we have an opportunity here of uh of someone with real world experience. Uh, and we lose nothing, I think, as far as someone, we're replacing someone that basically was on city council for two or three months. So um I think she can catch up, I, I just think we need to, to give this uh Mrs. Kofer a chance here.
I think what I
Any other comments on councillor Gomez?
For me, it's just looking at the experience coming out the door, that's all, and it's, I don't want to get personal on which candidate did better than the other, they all came out here with, with good hearts and good intentions, and I applaud every one of them for coming out here. But I'm just a realist, and I look at things pretty black and white, as you can tell. For me, the experience thing is the big key for me, for what it's worth. And I'd like to make a motion for Chris Nickel again.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor.
Oh, there's, sorry.
So we have a motion in a second, any other discussion on that motion? Let's call for the action. Bales three, three. Yes.
Um. I'm going to nominate Mr. Boston for the at-large position. Um. He may be a different affiliated party than I am, but what I heard from his answers was that he was going to uphold nonpartisan values. What I heard was that um he wasn't going to defund nonprofits. What I heard was that um he commits to listening to both sides of the issue before um he makes a decision, and I think that that's our goal and our prerogative on council. Um, I also appreciate that he is a hard worker and to councillor Gomez's point, we should not be discrediting just because experience looks different at, you know, I, I was new on this council, I have a full-time job. I work my butt off for, for council, um. What I heard him say is that he's a hard worker. What I heard him say is that he has already done a lot for the community in, in terms of his homework. And I don't think that we should be discrediting just because someone hasn't sat on this dius before does not mean they don't have the experience, same thing with Ms. Ms. Kofer. Um, that's my motion.
Sarah, second?
I'll second that, and I have to say that um we've already done the math. It looks like collectively we've come up with the most votes for Mr., or most points for Mr. Boston. And so that pretty much, you know, is reason enough to say if we're going to make compromises here on council that it seems like that he was a person that we could all work with or want to work with, just based off of how many points he scored. So I second the motion.
So we have a, a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Uh, could you reiterate the, 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 the numbers, the first numbers that came up on the ranking?
Uh, yes, so Mr. Boston scored twenty-four points. That means um everyone aside from one person ranked that, ranked him in their top one or two and the final person ranked them in as third. Um, Mr. Nickel, um, or excuse me, Ms. Kofer was the second with twenty-two points. Um, she had one person rank her as top, as the top, two people rank her as their second choice and three people rank her as their third choice. Um, Mr. Nickel had twenty-one points and he had three people rank as his top and he had three people rank as their fourth. Um, and would you like me to go to the other two?
Yeah, the, just wanted the question answered, thank you.
Uh, any other comments, let's call for the action. Bales three. Okay. You're going to reset it? Again? Somebody didn't vote. Joe, you need to vote. Reset it? Okay, vote now. It fails four, two. Is there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Chris Nickel again.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I'm just, um, for me, again, um, the experience is important to me due to the time that we have to really get things going, again, I'd like to reiterate that and I'm just a little bit bewildered it somehow experiences hurting this process, I don't, I don't get it. So that's all I got to say.
Any other comment? Let's call for the vote. Bales three, three. Any other nominations?
Excuse me, Mr. President? If we could just have a couple moments, we have to reload the computer, there's been so many votes.
Did we about bust it?
Yeah, it's almost broken, so we'll have to just uh reset it a little bit.
You need five minutes?
How long do you think you need? About five minutes? Yeah, about five minutes, thank you.
Pyjama time. When we get out of there.
Well, you know what? I'm going to, it really matters to my
Okay, we're back, and did we have a nomination when we didn't have a vote?
No, we had just closed out a nomination on Mr. Nickel.
And how many rounds have we had so far?
I believe this is thirteen.
Thirteen rounds.
Lucky number thirteen.
Fourteen rounds, we elected the, we selected the last one in five rounds. So there's a little disconnect here, that as we move forward, I think what we need to, to figure out is is that when do we call it a standoff? And we go back to the drawing table and select new candidates, that needs to be the next discussion that we have. If we just sit here and, and go back and forth for the next, you know, five, six, seven hours, three, three, thirty-two, whatever, but is there a nomination for somebody? Uh councillor Martinez?
Um, she was my first nomination, I'm going to renominate her. I really want you all to think about Ms. Colleen Clark for the at-large position. Um, in her application, she said that she has been, you know, as, as councillor Gomez is talking about experience in her application, Colleen Clark has said that she's been watching city council meetings for the past five years. Um, I don't know if that was that long, but she watches every city, city council meeting. So to councillor Gomez's point, she's familiar with the process, she rattled off three examples of recently passed ordinances, just, just off the top of her head and had a comment about it. So when um you're saying experience matters, I, again, I think that she has the experience as being a really informed citizen watching the council meetings, being involved, commenting on her own, I think, I think that's, I think that's an example of experience. Um, I also really like how she uh focused on listening first and, and um nonpartisanship. Um, talking about young people, retaining young people, so um, I, she already has some plans, uh, when you're saying, you know, hit the ground running, you know, that's, I, I think that she would feel that too, so I nominate Colleen Clark for the at-large position.
Sarah, second? I'll second it. Any other discussion? Let's call for the action. It fails five, one. Or one, five, however you want to look at it. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Chris Nickel.
I have a nomination of Chris Nickel, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any comments?
Like the comment, um, I understand what you're saying, Sarah. And I think on some point, but we have a gentleman here that's been in the council for eight years, not just watching on TV. So for me, that kind of experience and having that hands-on approach is very important to me.
Any other comments? Let's call for the vote. Bales three, three. Any other nominations? You need to turn your mic.
I nominated Anita Crawford.
Sarah, second?
Second.
We have a nomination and a second. Any comments? But, uh, Counselor Martinez?
I'm just, I'm lift, I'm uplifting comments left and right. One of the things that I really liked that you said, Ms. Cooper, tonight was um, God gives you two years on one mouth. And I really, I think that that's a skill that not a lot of people have. And I think it's such a tremendous skill to have on council. Um, and so that's why I'm seconding, seconding this and have been seconding this the whole, this whole time is because it would be, it's a necessary skill to have.
Any other comments?
Yes, disjointed as all this sounds. I read an article just recently that they did an average. Um, they, they looked at all councils across the country and what they came away with, that eighty percent of most councils at the end of the day speak with one voice. So that means twenty percent of them are not agreeing, and that's okay with me. And it should be okay with everybody here. But all I'm saying, you know, my reasons for why it is, is nothing against any other candidate. I'm just looking at the experience, that's it. So everybody else that came here, again, I applaud you for coming here and sticking through this. And hopefully you brought your pajamas.
Any comments?
I, can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
I also just wanna, um, say as we're looking to represent the people. Um, one of the reasons why I decided to run for city council was because there was no one on the dais that looked like me. Um, someone who was a Latina, someone who was young, someone who was, um, you know, working of a, a full-time job and, um, yeah, so I, I heard that in your first interview. I hear that again in your, in this, in this interview that I think that Anita can also fill a gap in, um, her looking like people who live in Pueblo on this dais, and I think that that's really important.
Any other comments? Let's call for the action. Bales four, two. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Chris Nickel again.
We have a nomination for Chris Nickel. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any comments? Let's call for the action. Bales three, three.
He's imagining.
Are any other nominations?
Um, I will again nominate Mr. Brett Boston. Again, it's not about age. It's not about, um, it's not about age. It's not about cultural background. It's not about ethnicity. It's about uh, you, young, fresh perspective serving here on council. And that's why, um, and, and then again, collectively, he came up with the most points. So why we're prolonging this is, I guess, up to everybody who decides to vote tonight.
Sir, do we have a second? Second by Counselor Martinez. Any other discussion? Let's call for the action. Bales four, two. Are any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Chris Nickel.
I have a nomination for Chris Nickel for the seat. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a second. Any comment? Let's call for the action. Bales three, three. Are there any other nominations?
It seems like we're going through, uh, in, in a circle here, and nothing's gonna change. Um, you know, what are, what, what's the next step if we can't? Um, if we can't come to some sort of conclusion here.
Well, that's up to us what the next step is.
Well, I guess our options is what he's asking.
Whatever you guys wanna do. We can stay here till midnight. Uh, we can, we can literally do anything that we, that, that we deem is, uh, is the right thing to do.
Maybe.
You can go back and rerank all of the applicants and, and restart the process. Come back to the table with another five. You can, there's all kinds of things you can do.
Well, we could take the first ranking. That seemed to be a collective, uh, score from all of us. It seemed like everyone participated in that.
Well, your first ranking is Mr. Boston. You've nominated Mr. Boston time after time. I don't think that there's a consensus that the top ranking is gonna happen, but we can certainly entertain that.
Well, that, that means that we're changing the process too, uh, in the middle of everything.
Well, yes, our choices.
Well, no, I, I still think we need to vote.
Well, I know that, that we're, that's just, I'm just putting it out there on the table. That's it.
If it's, if this is not supposed, if nonpartisan, what's the animus and I can sense it against Mr. Nickel? I, I'm trying to figure this out.
Counselor Gomez, I could say the same thing about any of the other applicants.
I'm not, I wasn't, I wasn't looking at you.
No, I'm not taking it personally. I'm saying.
I understand, but if you look at the votes, the closest we've gotten so far, time after time after time is three, three. That's what I'm saying. If we don't wanna budge, then let's put all the cards on the table and play it out.
Because you're not, you are not voting, you're voting no on every single other candidate besides one.
I'm entitled to do that.
And that's fine. But when you ask what's gonna take you guys to, if it's nonpartisan, what's gonna take you guys to move over? I can have the same question.
My question, what's the animus? That's the question I have.
And my question is, what, why aren't you considering any other of the other candidates?
I have my reasons. I told you, it's an experience issue for me. I've made that very clear. I don't know how much clearer I can make it.
And my pushback is that experience doesn't necessarily have to be on this dais for it to be considered experience.
That's fine. You're entitled to that.
Well, let's, let's, let's get back on task here because that argument is the same as the arguments we're having on selecting somebody for this position. Is there a nomination for for the seat?
I'll make a nomination for Chris Nickel.
We have a nomination for Chris Nickel. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any comments? Let's call for the action. And it fails three, three. Any other nominations?
I just wanna note for the record that actually there was another three, three vote. It was myself, Counselor Flores and Counselor Latino for Ms. Cooper at the very beginning. So that was another three, three vote.
I said that there was more three, three. I didn't say thus, there was just one three, three for, for Chris. I said there was three, three, and it seems to be, we're going with the same thing over and over and over. And you're asking me to budge, but meanwhile, on the other, you're not budging.
I've, I've nominated, I've nominated three of the candidates up that we have in front of us, three out of the five.
Appreciate.
Any, would you like to nominate another one?
President Aliff, I think that I'm feeling very frustrated right now, and I think that to Counselor Gomez's point earlier, um, we don't necessarily have to agree as a council all the time, but gosh, wouldn't it be nice if we could welcome someone on this dais who, um, can fill out the remainder of the ten months or whatever this appointment serves? Wouldn't it be such a great look for our community to have a dais that's completely filled? Um, voting on, um, you know, ordinances and resolutions for the next ten months?
That would be fantastic.
My, my, my comment. Again, this is pretty logical to me. We have ten months to the next election. Why would you want to put somebody that has no experience that has to catch up, to do the things that we have to do that are very, very important? We're in critical times right now, folks. We don't have time for this, to re-education, to, to educate somebody to catch up. Or that's the only argument I'm making. If Mr. Thurston was sitting there, I'd probably be saying the same thing. If Ms. Kohler was sitting there as former councilwoman, I'd be saying the same exact thing that I'm saying to you now. That's all. Thank you.
Is there another nomination?
Can you repeat it?
There, there hasn't been one, right? I'm gonna nominate Chris Nickel one more time so I can tell you why I'm doing it. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
You can take your chips.
So I happened to work with Chris Nickel for two years on city council the last time I was on city council. I found Chris Nickel to be moderate in all of his decisions. I found him to be overwhelmingly, uh, interested in literally everything and would always do his research, would always come to the table, uh, with good ideas, good arguments. If he didn't agree with me, or he didn't agree with somebody else, he did it out of respect. Uh, and he always offered up a solution in his disagreement. I found that type of leadership on city council to be wonderful. Uh, at that time, we were, uh, I came on to city council and I, I was the, the lone man out. I was out of seven people. Uh, I was the one that sat down at the end of the dais and, and, uh, didn't have a lot of say-so in anything. Uh, Counselor Nickel, who was the president at the time, uh, was very gracious, was very willing to, uh, share and to bring me up to speed and get me uh, going to, to where I, I would needed to go and, and was very supportive in everything I did. So I do have a personal relationship in that sense that I've been up here and I've been up here with him and I found him to be, uh, a great legislator who was very nonpartisan and would literally work for the better of Pueblo. And that's why I'm supporting him because I know that this is how it's going to be for the next twelve, thirteen months, however long it takes, uh, for the community to select somebody for that seat. Uh, I can be absolutely unequivocally one hundred percent certain uh, that the city will be represented, represented by a truly nonpartisan experienced leader. And that's why I'm, I, I'm, I'm taking the position that I'm taking. Any other comments?
This is like a comparison between Mr. Flores, as I consider, or the statesman. We joke a little bit, a little bit, I call him Mr. Swabe, but he's always very, he's very calm in his approach. And I, he's a statesman. He reminds me a lot of Chris. I'm not just saying that for plaudits. I'm just telling you, when I look at you two guys, you guys have that down pretty well. I just wanted to.
A statement is another word for old.
You're looking.
I'm old, I'm not a statesman. Uh, let's call for the action. It fails three, three. Is there anyone else wishing to put forward a nom, nomination? Nobody?
Um, Chris Nickel.
We have a nomination for Chris Nickel. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Think we've commented ourselves out. Let's call for the action. Man. Bales three, three. Is there another nomination?
Nominated.
Is there a second? We have a nomination and a second. Any discussion? We have two more before we have to reload.
Are there any concerns about Ms. Cooper that we should address before the vote, or any thoughts or feelings about Ms. Cooper from those that keep voting no?
I think she's a fine person. I've listened to her here. And again, I've, I've stated my reasons why I'm going with the experience. But I think she's, she's wonderful, to be honest with you. I've talked to her and her husband. And it's, it's not a personal thing for me. It really isn't.
I agree. Uh, in fact, I voted for the first time. I just think that for the next year, we need to have someone in there that, that, that has had the experience to deal with some of the things that we're dealing with now and come the fall of next year, then these folks will have an opportunity to run for that position. That's all I'm saying.
Any other comments?
Um, I also just wanna note for the record that I believe it's actually seventeen to eighteen months and not ten, ten months for this next uh, position.
Yeah.
Seventeen to eighteen months.
I didn't wanna correct you. That was ten, seventeen months.
Yeah. Um, I, and I just want to reiterate for the record that I do think that Ms. Cooper has the experience that I heard a lot of experience. I think I've, um, heard that she was able to hit the ground running. I don't have a, you know, I don't think any of us have a future ball, a, a magic ball to predict the future. Um, and so I think that counting on experience, everyone has experience that came to interview. Um, I heard experience from Ms. Cooper. I heard experience from Mr. Boston, even though they haven't sat on this dais before. Um, and, um, I, I would be happy to work with her for the next eighteen months.
Can you just repeat the nomination?
Any any other comments? Let's call for the vote. Bales four, two. Any other nominations?
I'm gonna go back to, uh, nominating Brett Boston. Uh, we're gonna talk about logic. It looked like based off of our first choice here in voting that everyone could collectively seem to have enough votes collectively to put Mr. Boston at the top of the list. And so I'm going to work with that.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any other comments? Let's call for the vote. Bales four, two. Any other nominations? Did we run out? Now we wait, have to wait five minutes? Five minutes. No, probably not.
She probably beat me. You hang? So does he need a call for? So I don't see logic.
But you're near that cave.
Yeah. Oh, Mark. This lady.
You want to hear some really important news, Dennis?
What?
Kellie Smith broke up with Kelsey.
That doesn't surprise me. Does it surprise you? Those, uh, those actors and actresses, I would say, just bounce around like.
Yeah. They make their lives rough, but they don't have to.
Yeah.
And you know what I was saying in reference to? You, you, I'm not just saying you are. I meant that.
It's close to retirement. It's close to retirement.
Was no nomination when we took the break. We just couldn't vote anymore. So is there a nomination for uh, anybody?
I hate to sound like a broken record, but I'm gonna nominate Chris Nichol.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any comments, questions? Let's call for the vote. Fails three, three. Is there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
I'll go back and I'll nominate Brett Boston. I'm just gonna go off of our, what we've already voted for and where those have brought us, the scores brought us and that's the democratic process. There we did. We took a, tallied up the votes and Mr. Boston had the largest amount and so I'm gonna go ahead and stick with that nomination.
Is there a second? We have a second. Is there any comments, questions? Let's call for the vote. Uh, you're gonna have to vote again. Fails four, two. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Chris Nichol.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comment? Call for the vote. Fails three, three. So we have to ask our question, our, ourselves as a council, if we're hopelessly deadlocked. Hopelessly deadlocked. Do we need to create a different system? Uh, do we need to uh, move this to next week, so everybody can think about it, or do we need? I'm just throwing things out.
I'd like to consider if we can moving it to next week. If we're deadly asleep, same vote's gonna keep on happening, well, these poor folks will be here all night. Um, and if we can have a little bit of time to chew on it, maybe that would help.
But I'm worried that we move right back next week into the same process of doing the exact same thing over and over again.
Well, I'm sure there's gonna be discussions somewhere along the line, whether it's the public or whatever. If it's, i- 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 it's not a quorum of us talking together, people are talking to each other, this goes on all the time. And I just think, what other alternatives do we have right now? I don't know what it is.
I'm open to suggestions. Counselor Martinez?
I'm curious what um, our clerk has to say about this and what options she presents.
I, you know, President Aliff's correct. Um, it, this is, this, the way that this goes is entirely up to council. The charter does not speak to anything aside from the fact that council appoints. So uh, we can go through a variety of, of other exercises. Um, we did the, the ranked choice, which was uh, or not the ranked choice, but we did um, the ranked voting, which was kind of meant to give council a tool to see where you all were at. Um, who your number one um, choice was, who everyone's number two choice was. Um, I'm happy to read those out in their entirety if you'd like. We can also uh, try some other potential exercises um, such as possibly disqualifying candidates to leave you with fewer candidates to debate amongst. Uh, but none of that is binding and council would be able to, to bring back any candidates that they, they would like to do, because it is a rather open process.
That's if they're still interested.
So the, I'm not saying that you can nominate a man off the street, uh, or a woman off the street, for that matter. Um, but if there is a candidate that submitted their application for this round that is interested.
I'm curious if um, if there are any additional questions we need to ask tonight of the candidates to narrow down our choice.
It's a good thought.
Um, I would request that if you did, um, liked, if you would like to ask additional questions of the candidates, we would wanna make sure that all the candidates are afforded the opportunity to answer the same questions as previously.
I just, I think I really would like us to come to a resolution, because I, I want seven council members on this dais. Um, I don't wanna, selfishly, I don't wanna go until midnight tonight, um, for my own sake. Um, I don't know what it would look like to redo the process. Also, given my own timelines selfishly, that um, you know, President Aliff has expedited this process because I could be out at any moment, um, starting tomorrow. Um, so I don't know what that process of redoing the process would look like. I don't know. It just makes me really concerned about timelines.
Counselor Maestri?
I put a motion on the table to nominate uh, Anita Kofert. I've been sitting back, um, waiting to see how far this would go. Um, I do agree that uh, she is a qualified new, fresh, fresh perspective. And I want to uh, show the community that I'm willing to, you know, take um, other options. Thank you, Ms. Koper, for applying.
Second. So we have, we have a motion and a second. Any comments? Let's call for the vote. Fails three, three.
I'd like him to make a motion to nominate uh, Brett Boston. Um, as we said, we've already we've already have a count. And a lot of times, that's how things are decided in just that initial vote. Um, by tallying up what everybody thinks. And so I'm gonna make that motion to nominate him.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any comment? Let's call for the vote.
So I guess, Mr. President, I'm, like, I don't, I mean, if we're gonna keep down this road, it's gonna be midnight before we know it.
It'll be five in the morning before we know it.
Does any other counselor have an idea of how to move forward? I think it's ironic that one of the questions I asked tonight is about consensus building.
I, I think we have very qualified candidates. There's no question, there's no question about it. I, I think, however, that at this juncture, at this particular time in this community with the things that we're dealing with, for the next year, we need someone that has a background who really understands this community, has had the experience in an in-depth manner in working with this community. And um, that's why I'm supporting at this point in time, Chris Nichol.
Anybody else? Uh, Counselor Martinez?
Can I ask a clarifying question for you, Counselor Latino? Um, are you, are you saying that you're only gonna support Counselor, or uh, Chris Nichol from here on out? Or are you open to hearing other?
I'm open-minded. However, we've been dealing with this now, and I think you know where we, we're coming from, the three of us. It's a three, three. We can do the three, three all night long. We need to take into consideration that we have a, an individual who has a background and experience to do the things that, that need to be done at this point in time for the next year and a half. And a- at that juncture, then, the, the individuals that have come forth and have finished in the top five or four, whatever, wherever we are now, um, will have an opportunity to run for that position. Um, through the constituency, uh, with a petition.
But what I'm, what I'm hearing you say is you're not gonna budge on any other candidate besides Nichol.
That's it.
Fails three, three. Is there any other nominations?
I'd like him to make a motion to nominate uh, Brett Boston. Um, as we said, we've already we've already have a count. And a lot of times, that's how things are decided in just that initial vote. Um, by tallying up what everybody thinks. And so I'm gonna make that motion to nominate him.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any comment? Let's call for the vote. Fails four, two.
So I guess, Mr. President, I'm, like, I don't, I mean, if we're gonna keep down this road, it's gonna be midnight before we know it.
It'll be five in the morning before we know it.
Does any other counselor have an idea of how to move forward? I think it's ironic that one of the questions I asked tonight is about consensus building.
I, I think we have very qualified candidates. There's no question, there's no question about it. I, I think, however, that at this juncture, at this particular time in this community with the things that we're dealing with, for the next year, we need someone that has a background who really understands this community, has had the experience in an in-depth manner in working with this community. And um, that's why I'm supporting at this point in time, Chris Nichol.
Anybody else? Uh, Counselor Martinez?
Can I ask a clarifying question for you, Counselor Latino? Um, are you, are you saying that you're only gonna support Counselor, or uh, Chris Nichol from here on out? Or are you open to hearing other?
I'm open-minded. However, we've been dealing with this now, and I think you know where we, we're coming from, the three of us. It's a three, three. We can do the three, three all night long. We need to take into consideration that we have a, an individual who has a background and experience to do the things that, that need to be done at this point in time for the next year and a half. And a- at that juncture, then, the, the individuals that have come forth and have finished in the top five or four, whatever, wherever we are now, um, will have an opportunity to run for that position. Um, through the constituency, uh, with a petition.
But what I'm, what I'm hearing you say is you're not gonna budge on any other candidate besides Nichol.
That's it.
Any other comments, questions?
I feel, I feel for Sarah. I really do. Um, this is not easy, this stuff. And, and the condition that you're having to deal with, with dais, um, I apologize for that. Um, and I really do, my heart goes out to you. Again, it just, if I had to look at it, and I'm open to the people to see it through logic versus illogic for me. That's how I see it. That's all it is. Again, it's not personal. We got some wonderful folks here. But logically, we got thirteen months, whatever it is. We have somebody that can get in there right away and support some of the things we've gotta get done, as opposed to learning to support the job that we have to get done. That's all I wanna clarify. Thank you.
Are there any nominations?
I'll nominate Chris Nichol.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any comments, questions? Uh, let's call for the vote. Fails three, three. Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Chris Nichol again.
Is there a second?
I'll sec, I'll second that.
Let's call for the vote. Fails three, three. Are there any other nominations?
Um, you know, it, when we're talking about uh, building consensus, I have heard now from Counselor Gomez, from Counselor Latino, that there's one candidate on here, there's, and that, that we're not gonna budge. I'm curious, President Aliff, you seem to be voting again for Nichol over and over and over again. Is there any, are you able to budge at all with the other?
I guess my question would be to you two. I mean, is there there has to be compromise at this level of government. And I'm not saying I'm not willing to compromise, and I'm not willing to uh, uh, do something else, but at this point, I am adamant about the most qualified I know from experience, the person that, that I want to be in that seat, and that's why I'm voting the way that I'm voting. Obviously, when we went through this process before, I compromised. And, you know, that, that's I don't know why I need to be the one that always compromises.
No, I'm, I'm not suggesting that, President Aliff. I guess I'm just curious about um, what we need to do to work to build consensus. Um, I think that I, I'm really excited about three candidates. I've motioned for all three candidates at this point between um, Mr. Boston, Ms. Koper and Ms. Clark. Um, again, like, I, I, I don't know their registered affiliation. I think um, I'm, you know, I, I'm sure I'll disagree with all of them at some point, but that's a compromise in and of itself. So I'm, I guess I'm just asking, what do we need to do in order to build consensus? If we cannot achieve consensus, which it sounds, we're going down the road, that we're not gonna be able to achieve consensus, um, do we need to restart the process over again? Do we need to interview the next five um, applicants? Do we need to call them back for further questions? Um, what do we need to do to reach consensus?
Well, as we stated earlier, that's up to council. What, whatever process council wants to do, it's not my process. Uh, it's not, uh, the mayor's process, anything like that. It's our process.
So in, in reviewing the votes, it does look like there is a top three of the five candidates that have received three votes. Um, if council would like, we could pull out the focus tool, taking out those two bottom candidates, um, which would be Ms. Clark and Mr. Magatu. Um, and vote just for those top three and see if that ranking illustrates something any further. If council is interested, that's an option.
Well, that's, that's up to council.
Yes.
I'm just curious if anybody thinks that if we have, again, being sensitive to this, your situations, it bothers me. If we do take a timeout, we take a timeout and have to come back to this, that's fine. But, uh, you know, I feel like a heel if I'm gonna be putting this pressure. It's not right. And for me, um, if we go to all, take a break, whatever, and I'm not just saying for the night, I'm saying for whatever, maybe another week, and see how things happen. Some of the comments you're gonna get from your constituents, I'm sure they're gonna be loud and clear. Let's see what ha, how that may impact us all. And see if we come back for another vote. But, but do this, I think it's unfair.
Well, I think it's unfair, uh, because of, um, Counselor Martinez, Martinez's situation. I mean, if she happens to, by the time we return to the dais to decide this, and she happens to have her child, we may have to wait until after she comes back from her maternity leave in order to continue this. So I think that should be a consideration. Um, we're just not gonna knock this out by, you know, knocking her out because she's on maternity leave. But then again, we're not in a hurry.
A candidate still needs four votes.
Correct.
So there's, there's five of us here still. You're, you're still gonna be, yes, you're still gonna be connected by Zoom too, if we needed to do that on Monday. Look at her face now.
Well, you know, these guys come from the days where women had a baby and went back to work in the fields, you know?
I, I will say that this is not uncommon, that, that, that many city councils throughout the country go through this same process. I think you can Google it about, uh, sometimes it takes hundreds and hundreds of votes to come up with one person. Shake your head because I don't know how it gets to that point, but it's real. But I think we need to decide amongst ourselves if we're just gonna go back and forth, if none, if, 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 if you're not willing to compromise, then let's just, let's just, uh, put this off for another week. Come back and, uh, do it again.
Is it another week or is it Monday?
Can't do it on Monday because, well, I guess you could put it on Monday and as soon as the regular meeting's over, and put it at the end of the regular meeting.
I, I think we're gonna get input from our.
Oh, Monday's a work session, isn't it?
Yes, Monday.
So we could do it on Monday.
That sounds like a good idea to me.
But it's up to council to do, whatever, if you wanna stay here and, and keep going through this.
Can we make that motion right now?
Absolutely.
Dennis, do you wanna make the motion?
I move that we, uh, move this process to Monday.
I second.
So we have a motion to, uh, continue this resolution on Monday's work session?
Uh, so it would not be on the work session, it would need to be another special meeting, um, called by either the majority of council or the president? Do you so call that meeting?
I will, if we, if everybody wants to do it. So let's vote on the motion.
So vote on the motion too.
Sure.
I guess, help me understand what the, what the time delay is gonna do. The more that, I mean, are we gonna take stock of the more that you hear from a constituent about one candidate, the better? That's how you're gonna make your vote?
I listen to my constituents all the time.
I know, but that's, so what I'm hearing then is that that's the goal, is for us to just hear which candidate is better from our constituents.
Again, putting the pressure in, 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 in reference to you is, I don't think, I don't like that. And if you're, I thought you would be amenable to this. If we take, if we take the timeout, I may get some input, you may get some input. Each one of us might get input that might change one of our votes. We don't, we don't know that unless we try it. And I think to, to, to let this go for a week is showing respect to you and the rest of the dais. That's just all I'm saying.
Show respect to her when she could be having, not even be present because of her condition. How's that show respect?
I didn't say, that's, you're misconstruing what I'm saying.
You just said that.
But you're misconstruing it. What I'm saying is, if we get a chance to go and for the next week, get input from our constituency, and they're gonna have voices on this, because I'm sure they're watching it. Let's see what they've got. I wanna, I wanna know what my constituent is gonna say at tonight. I wanna hear it. And it may help me, it may help you, it may help you. But just to knock that out and say, let's not do it. We're looking for a solution to get, to get past this right now. We're in a deadlock and we know it. So anybody else has a suggestion, let me hear it.
Well, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second to move it till, to Monday. So we need to vote on that. Let's.
Sorry, President Aliff.
I mean, if you don't wanna, if you wanna do it, then just vote no.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm curious, does, um, clerk or mayor, do you have anything about the timeline that is prohibitive for work or anything?
Uh, the charter does not have a timeline. There is a timeline in the statute. Uh, but my understanding is, uh, when we discussed this previously, is that the city attorney does not believe that applies because it, it does speak to, uh, the process within the charter. So there is, there does not, um, a timeline according to her. Is that correct?
All right, let's call for the vote. Is there any other comments?
Could you repeat the vote again?
This is for a vote to, to continue this till Monday at a special meeting after the work session.
After the executive session, the work session. There's also an executive session that night.
After all that. It passes six, zero, so we'll see everybody on Monday. Logic only prohibits.